And council agendas out, and they're taking all the notes during our meeting. And so seeing as though this is her last meeting that she will have official duties, she is going to call our meeting to order, and an hour or so later is going to adjourn us. And that's so that the minutes will show that she actually did come to the town every now and then. Because otherwise, she's never in the minutes. So Holly, it is seven o'clock. Your job, oh, you better turn the recorder on, right? Okay. Come on up here. The gavel's sitting here. Come on up.
All right.
Are we got pictures ready? Okay, so kind of hold the gavel up, and we'll get a picture, and then you're going to hit it and call us to order.
I'll order the January fourteenth, twenty twenty council meeting to order. And once this hits end up.
Thank you very much.
Did you find my suit?
All right.
And a great suit it is.
In just a minute, I'll ask everyone to stand, and we'll be led in an opening prayer by Senior Pastor Barry Klingon of the Church at Trophy Lakes. Remain standing, we'll be led in pledges to the American flag and the Texas flag by Councilmember Schaffner. Would you please stand?
Let us pray together. Our Father, this is a day that you have made, and we choose to rejoice and be glad in it. Father, we begin our meeting the first of the year by honoring you and invoking your blessings upon us. We fully recognize that it's from you and you alone that we receive all good gifts in our life. Father, we recognize that you declare in Scripture that you will honor those who honor you. So tonight, I ask you to honor and bless our mayor with wisdom from above as he leads our city. I pray that you would honor and bless our council with wisdom, direction, as they represent their constituents. I pray for our town manager, all of the staff, as they work diligently to make our city function with excellence. I pray for our police chief, and soon to have fire chief, and all of our officers and firemen, that you would give them divine protection even as they protect us. I pray especially tonight, Father, for all of our schools, our administrators, our teachers, our students. I pray that you will protect them from all the evil that is in the world, and that evil will never arrive on any of our campuses. Father, it's your wisdom that is upon us that we pray for every day, and we pray you would lead us and guide us in all things. We pray these things in the name of a great lover of our souls, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. You may be seated. I did want to mention to everybody that in, I shouldn't say celebration of mourning that Holly is leaving us, we have a cake at the back. And so anybody that wants to partake of the cake may do so sometime during the meeting today. All right, it is time for citizens' presentations. It's an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it's posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics of your statements. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. Holly, it doesn't look like I have anybody that's signed up to speak.
No mayor.
All right. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Don't see anyone trying to. We will move on then to item number one. Recognition of the Byron Nelson High School girls volleyball team for winning the Class Six A state championship. All right, yay! Thought y'all could make more noise than that. Coach Groth is here. Where are you, Coach? Wave your hand, stand up. And so in just a minute, after I'd say a few things, I'm going to let you say a few words if you'd like to. I'm giving you the ten-second notice. You can only get so nervous when you do that kind of thing. Well, ladies, we are really excited about you coming tonight, and really, what the excitement is all about is you winning state. And I know that was a lot of work, and was quite a celebration, and as a town, we get to benefit from that, and the recognition of that. And we have a presentation for you that we're going to make in a few minutes. The volleyball team's final game was against Plano West Wolves in a five-set thriller. I watched it. It was a thriller. And it was on Saturday, November twenty-third, and they earned the first state title in the sport of volleyball for both the school, Byron Nelson, and for Northwest ISD. In the game, and I bet the girls know this, they won by the scores of the following per set, twenty-one, twenty-five. What's the next one? Twenty-five, twelve. Y'all don't remember? Been too long? Twenty-two, twenty-five. Wait a minute. What does that mean?
Lost.
That sounds like a lost. Twenty-five, fifteen, and then fifteen, seven. Boy, that last one, y'all pretty dominated, didn't you? Following the state final, media members voted Byron Nelson Junior, yeah, I don't know how to pronounce her name, Shuretti?
Charity.
Say it.
Charity.
Charity, okay. Looper, as the title game MVP, and Charity has verbally committed to play where? She doesn't know. UCLA, following her last year at Byron Nelson, which will be next year. She was joined on the UIL Six A All Tournament Team by junior teammate Peyton Chamberlain. Peyton, are you here? Yes? You're hidden by somebody, okay. Who has verbally committed to Wyoming, is that right?
Yes.
All right. And senior teammates Paige Fickinger, is that, say that right? Paige, are you here?
Yes.
Who signed a letter of intent to play at LSU. Wow, I bet it was exciting this weekend, wasn't it? Yeah, get right into it. Now, there's something else to be known about Paige, and what is that Paige? You don't know? Well, I believe you received the honors of a state champion, right? Yeah?
Most important.
Most important, yeah. So we're so proud of everyone for doing that. Overall, the Bobcats finished with a record of fifty and two. I don't know who the two were, but they probably were excited that they beat y'all. It's the first fifty-win season in school history. The Bobcats are led by head coach Groth, who's going to talk to us in a second. She's assisted by coaches Amy Lilly, I don't know if she's here. She waved. You gotta wave big now. Whitney Key, is Whitney here? No, okay. Jennifer Lotasue, I don't know if I would say that. Is she here? And Missy Macbeth. No? Oh, so these are wrong.
No, they're not.
Oh, they're not here. That's what the no is. Okay. Anyway, congratulations to everyone for that, and we have a presentation for y'all. So let me get that, and then we're going to take a picture. And they have to get out of here because they have practice at seven-thirty.
Oh, my goodness.
Is that right? There's been practice here. All right. So, first of all... There are going to be four of these signs posted at all four of the entrances to Trophy Club. And so, it's not one that you can steal and take home. No way now.
Be surprised.
I would never.
Be surprised.
We'll have cameras up. Anyway, that's part of our celebration that we're presenting to y'all. And so in a minute, we're going to try to get everybody to take this, take a picture with this. And so, Coach, you want to come up and say a few words? What does that say?
That is so awesome. First of all, thank you to everybody. The community has been so amazing. So much support for volleyball, the sport in itself, and then for our girls. It is, I've been at a lot of places, and I'm telling you, Trophy Club is super special. So, thank you guys so much. Thank you, everybody here. It's been a magical season, and we really couldn't have done it without you guys. And I'm just so proud of these girls, and we're just really lucky to be here. So, thank you so much for everything.
Thank you. All right, so it's time for a picture. So we're going to have to figure out how we're going to do that. So I need all the girls and coaches to come up in line here, and I'm going to get all the council to... Stand behind. Come back, get up here. I'm not quite sure standing behind will work, we'll see what we do. I bet if we stand back. Come over. We don't think it's sorted out. I need somebody to help me hold this sign. Who's going to help the other side? I can take it on the air. The only time. We're still not going to talk. You're still calling us. Get up. You need... See the camera. Hey, Alicia.
Yeah, I'm here.
You'll be able to see your face.
Just pop up on the desk.
Bring your seat.
Yep, we're good.
Everybody, council, are we seen?
No, of course not.
I don't think I'm going to have to go out front. I know that Eric should be seen, but if you come around.
I can barely see him.
You all scoot this way. All right, well, where's the council?
We're good.
Right here.
No, we're either tall or...
All right. Two, three, good couple. One more. I think we're good.
Okay, so on three, what are we going to say? Go Bobcats? Is that the thing? One, two, three. Go Bobcats! We promise it, we're mad. No, I'm... My ears too. Maybe I'll lean in here. Be every shot. We're now going to go to item two, recognition of police officer... Wait a minute, can I still call him a police officer if he retired? Retired police officer.
Always an option.
Scott Voight, for his years of service that he provided to Trophy Club. Officer Voight has been with Trophy Club PD for thirteen years, and was a reserve police officer for seven years before that. Come on up, Scott, as we're doing this. And Elena, you want to come with him if you feel like it? If not, we understand. Scott was the police department's community services officer, and worked with HOAs and other community partners to help coordinate efforts to ensure that the town remains safe. Scott was also responsible for organizing and teaching the Citizens Police Academy, and Scott was the department's liaison with the Trophy Club Emergency Volunteers Association. Scott is the COP Coordinator, COP, for the department. This program is citizens' volunteers helping the department patrol the streets of Trophy Club, looking for things out of place. And this year, the COP's program took the responsibility of watching all the deliveries on the porches for Christmas, to make sure someone didn't take something off a porch that they shouldn't be taking. And to our knowledge, no one reported a theft of something off their porch. So, yay, team, right?
Second year.
Second, oh, excuse me, okay. So Scott, we know that you were already recognized by the department, and we thank you for coming tonight, but it's quite an accomplishment, what you've done and the service to this town, and we very much appreciate that. And so we have a little thing for you. And so let's give him a round of applause. Elena, you want to come up?
You wanted to get at least one by himself?
We does?
Yeah, go ahead.
She must want us. Okay, wait a minute. That puts us behind the step. Come up, come up your step. I've learned that that's not the thing that we've got to do things. Okay, Elaine, Elaine, you going to come join us? I'm going to put Elaine on the side. All right. Wait a minute, Linda's starting to make it. Thank you so much. You want to say something?
Other than just thank you, I love the town, and I'm not going anywhere. I'm staying till I die.
Oh, okay. All right, item number three. Recognition of Town Secretary Holly Fimbros for her years of service that she provided to the town of Trophy Club. So we do have a gift, a couple of gifts for Holly, and going to allow council to say a few words if they wish to do so after we present the gifts. And if any of the citizens wish to speak, we'll let you speak even if you don't sign up on this particular item, although we did have one person sign up. So Holly, would you come up, please? Holly has been with us five years, right? Five years. When Holly came here, she had been with the city of Ulus, working in the city secretary's office. She did not have her certification. Yep. And so we took the chance that Holly would get her certification. I think we actually made you do that. But that way, at least you could have time off to go do that. She accomplished that, and for those of us who have been around a while, I would say, for me personally, who has been a mayor for ten years, she's the best city secretary I've ever worked with, and I mean that. So we have a little crystal piece here, has the town logo on it. Says, "In grateful appreciation for your years of dedicated service to the town of Trophy Club by the mayor and town council, January twenty twenty." So here, we got to get a picture. Do we, you want us in front of that? Yeah. Thank you so very much, and there's a case board over there. And so...
Thank y'all very much. Y'all are, I'll start tearing up. Y'all are the best council. So thank y'all very much for your support, and it was a tough decision, but you know, kind of putting my little three-year-old first, so thank y'all so much for your support.
Thank you, Holly. And so at this time, I'll let council say anything if they would like to, and I'm going to start down here with Phillip.
With me. Well, this is kind of bittersweet. I always thought that I would outlast Holly, not that Holly, you know, would, or actually, I'm sorry, I always thought Holly would outlast me, and not vice versa. So the, I went back, I was trying to find some emails today, and on October sixth, I think if Holly would have read that email, it was, it was an email with Greg, and Nick, myself, and Mike Sly. And had Holly read that email before she came on board, she probably could have demanded twice the money that we offered her, because we were at our wits' end. I mean, it, I just, you, it brought back a lot of memories reading those emails, and going through all that stuff, that we were just, it was not a good situation. And not only that, when we put the job out, we got two applicants, two. And so our first, our first interview, I remember so well, because we, this building didn't even exist. It was just a pasture land. We were at the mud building, and it was, it was really early, Ryland, right? Like, like eight o'clock in the morning, something like that, because usually, I wanted them early so I could go to work. And so it was Nick, myself, and Ryland on the interview committee, hiring committee, and I think Mike Sly was also in the room that day. So, I got up to the mud building, and at that time, you, we went in the front door, and I think they had to let us in. It was their building, not our building. And I remember walking in, and there was somebody sitting in the chair in the lobby. And when I walked in, she goes, "Good morning, Councilman Schaffner." And I was like, "Oh, hi." I had no idea who she was. I was like, "Okay." So we walked back before she came back, and to my surprise, here comes Holly back. And so we would soon learn that, I think in the time that she was in Ulus, how many days? You never missed a day. You were there, you, you got your degree, UTA, while working, and you started at the bottom and were, I mean, it was just like, whoa, all of the things, it just blew us away. And it was funny, because she had actually applied before, and Mike Sly passed her over, and we were like, "How in the world could you pass this person over? Never missed a day, hard worker, got a degree." And so, but like Nick said, she didn't have the certification, but she had a plan, she presented the plan, and she has fulfilled everything that we possibly ask of her. And so, it quickly became, Holly quickly, quickly became my favorite person on staff. I mean, and I was not very shy about saying how much I liked her, and how much I valued her employment here. And I remember, I don't have, I couldn't find the email, but I remember Mike Sly, I wrote something to him and said, "Now, you realize that whatever Holly wants, we're going to give her." And he goes, "Yeah, yeah, I know my place." And so I did find Tom Kless's email to me, where he says, "I totally understand the second place finish. I've always known Holly is important and much better than me." So I, I didn't, I never made it clear to, to our new town manager, but, but I certainly...
Apparently he has now.
But I certainly made it clear to everybody. But you know what it is, is that anything that we ask, I remember, I would always get frustrated at our agenda as you go through each agenda item. You wouldn't know, am I on agenda item three, am I on agenda item sixteen? And I just casually mentioned it to Holly. It'd be nice if we had the agenda item number. And if you look on every agenda for the past three or four years, there's that agenda item number. So she never, she never missed anything. She always, I would search, you know, I like to find things, you know, okay, you made this mistake. Very rarely did I ever find a mistake on Holly. I mean, she was just that good. And so she did everything that we possibly, you know, and I told, I think Dot David last night, I said, you know, we were talking about Holly, and I said, "I'm actually surprised she lasts this long, because we went through a lot of stuff as a council through the years, and the one consistent was always Holly. She, she always was there, she always did what we wanted, she always was very loyal to this, to our council, to us as individuals." And, and there was never any of that, you know, behind the scenes, "Oh, this council member did that." No, she was always the same with every council member in the room, every council member since she started, very professional, and Grapevine is very lucky, very, very lucky, and we are very unfortunate to lose her, but I wish her the best, and I totally understand. Thank you.
Michael.
I guess we met about a year ago, and, you know, it's been a short time. You don't, it doesn't take much time to know, sometimes you meet people with a lot of quality. And I think our town needs to know that the type of person that she is, and that we're losing, and it's, I mean, it's good for you, I know it's a family move, and I can completely respect that, or if we find another way to keep you here, even if it's shredding your resignation. But I mean, I think people need to know from the town, just the type of people we have working for us here on town staff. And I think you model that, I mean, thorough and professional, you alluded to, dedicated, completely dedicated, and caring, too. It's not just the job, but there's also the kind of the human aspect to it. But, like you said, she's always extremely professional, right down the road, and just a straight shooter, and always trying to be in the up and up, and do everything to the T. And it speaks a lot of quality to, it's what we, we have as use and assets to the town. And I just think the town people need to know that, and I think they also need to know that, that you're welcome back, that, that when that time comes back, and you need to come back to home, you can come back here, and I think there'll be that spot for you. And I think everybody here on council will be more than happy to come and vouch for you. Make sure whoever's on council at that time, be sure they, they get you the job. But I appreciate the time we've been able to spend together, appreciate how you look out for everybody, and how you look out for our citizens in particular, and been just, if there was a way we could hire you on the civilian side, I would do it. But best of luck to you, to you and your family.
Carl?
Holly, I don't know how you do it, but you answer emails before I send. I don't know how that works, but it's been a very short time, but you have helped me tremendously, learn my place coming in, and with the information that you've given me, making sure that I do the right thing. So, I greatly appreciate that, I echo everything that has already been said, and we'll miss you here, I'll miss you here, and, and hope you come back and visit sometime. I'll come visit you in great time.
Eric?
As, something I was thinking of, we'd always tell Holly to take a vacation, right? She would never want to take vacation. I have some employees like that, too. I'm like, you put, there is no doubt, you put one hundred percent into your job. You are a professional. You've handled yourself very well over these five years. And, you know, as somebody, as a, as a corporate president, as I am, and dealing with high-level executive positions, and, you know, sometimes there's some things that just don't go the way I want them to, and I have to say, "No, this is how I want you to do this, how I want you to do it." There's only been one time, I had a suggestion for you, right? In three years, I had one suggestion, I said, "Hey, could you just do, I just need a, I need a reminder on when to turn in the, the financials," right? Ever since then, boom, emails come out two weeks before they're due. And it's just like, if anybody asked, you're on it. It was done, and we didn't have to worry. And you're going to do great things, I have no doubt.
Sean?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't realize it until tonight, but I joined EDC, I think it was right after you were hired, and I didn't realize how great at the time, but man, every time I needed something, you were always right there. And I don't know that I've met anyone that knew less about city government than I did when I joined EDC, but wow, you are just a treasure, and you're going to be missed, but I know, I'm happy for you and your family, I know you're going to do some great things in Grapevine, so just can't say enough good things about you. You've been absolutely awesome, and I cannot imagine anyone being able to fill the position the way you did. You're going to be missed.
Alicia?
Oh, where do I start? Oh, my goodness. The first thing I want to bring to your attention, I, Mary, you touched on it a little bit, the term town secretary or city secretary, it really is a misnomer in this day and age. You do so much, I mean, in charge of our elections, our meeting, our minutes, our boards and commissions, training, on top of supporting all of... on top of supporting all of us on council and all of staff. I mean, your job is enormous. Um, I think they should give you a new title in Grapevine. Um, but on top of that, the way you personally take care of all of us. For me, example, my proclamations and everything, you're always keeping me on task. "Oh, this is coming up, we need to do this." And like Eric's financial reminders, always the reminders and making sure we, we do what we're supposed to do. Um, I'm really gonna miss that. I'm gonna have to work on my calendar. Um, and as sad and heartbroken as I am to see you leave, as a working mom, I absolutely respect your decision. Don't second guess it and don't regret it and go forth and be happy and enjoy your family. And like Eric said, you're gonna do amazing things and you're so young. You have so much time to do such great things and I can't wait to see what you do i- in the future. So we love you, but don't look back. We'll always be here and love to come have lunch with you in Grapevine. But be confident in your decision and know that we all love you here and you will be greatly missed.
Well, Holly, I think you're either the fourth or fifth city secretary that I have worked with and the best. For those of you who don't know, not only does she do the things that have been mentioned, but she is the official records manager for town. And so besides all of those duties, it's her job to make sure that all the records we keep for public information are kept and we can find them when we get public information requests. And those sometimes come at the most inopportune moment. So sometimes those come during an election cycle when Holly is up here on election day, which is a Saturday, from early in the morning till after the polls close. And, uh, as opposed to being with her family. Now, good thing is she has all these open records requests come that she takes care of while the election's going on. But she is the election official for the town. And there's so many things that you take care of. I am sure that, uh, we're gonna find a list a mile long that we weren't sure that who took care of that, but you were doing that. Uh, you really are such a nice person to work with. So, uh, level-headed, so calm, uh, so kind to us elected officials who, uh, walk in at the drop of a hat and ask you to do something and you're there on it. From what I can tell from staff, I'm not sure there's anyone that works in the building, uh, that people appreciate more than you. They're always saying how kind Holly is. So they're all gonna miss you along with us. So your last day is Friday and I talked to Bruno Rumblo today and got that extended 30 days. No, that's not true. Shucks.
Now you're gonna see her really cry.
Uh, Eric, I think it was you that said something about vacations. Yes, Holly wouldn't take vacation, uh, nor would she take any time off. So when she might have had a election cycle where she put in 15, 16 hour days and Saturdays, uh, she wasn't missing any time during the week. And I would say, "Holly, which days are you taking off this week?" And she'd have to tell me which days. Now, I don't know if she ever took them or not, but she made a commitment to these, she was going to take them. And then I would go tell the town manager, "Holly's taking off these days. She needs to have some downtime." Uh, and so I remember when you started, at least I know you had no children, right? I don't believe you were married, were you?
We were, yes sir.
You were married?
Newly, newly married.
Newly married, okay. So for those who don't know, is Holly is, um, married to a police officer in Ulyss. And, uh, so she did miss some days here, sick leave. But I can just tell you that when she was expecting her son, we were in the middle of interviewing for a town manager. Town manager that we're interviewing or the prospective person is over at the table in front of all the council. Holly is over to the side making sure the minutes are happening. And I look over and Holly is not feeling good. And we knew that like a week later, the baby was due or something like that. And I'm going, "You know, guys, um, we may, we are, we were in the fire station, so we did have paramedics there, uh, that could have been there at the drop of a hat. But it was like, let's take a break and see if Holly needs to leave." And Holly did not leave, even though she was, uh, I believe in labor.
I thought there were brex and dicks.
Uh, yeah, right, okay. I watched your face. Whatever they were, they weren't comfortable, were they? Okay, all right. She just really is a dedicated person and, and there's really not anything we can do that repays you for what you did for us and what you did for the citizens of Trophy Club. You provided a wonderful service to our town in a high-growth time with lots of things going on that were far beyond what you normally would have taken care of as a city secretary. So on behalf of, uh, myself and my wife Linda, I want to thank you for your kindness and your professionalism. Uh, you will be missed, but I did talk to Bruno. And so I will be coming to talk to him every now and then, just so I can come see you, right? Okay, you'll let me in town hall? All right, so we did have one citizen who signed up to speak and that's Ryland Rowe. So Ryland, I'll let you come forward and speak. And if anybody wants to say some words, you can do so also.
Thank you, sir. 404 Skyline Drive, Trophy Club, Texas. I'm here to gush about Holly. You all have said really a lot of what needed to be said and, but we, I've been up there. We like to repeat ourselves, right? So, um, Holly, you're, you're really just, I mean, for anybody who has supervised or managed, uh, employees, you'll understand that, um, communication is, is bidirectional in the sense that when you're the, in the management position, you are, you are giving the direction and then how you do that, but then it's also how they hear it. And everybody's different and so you learn to, you learn how to get the most out of everybody by, you know, tailoring your communication skills and style. And the longer you do it, the better you get. And Holly, it was like day one and she could already know why I was asking for something without me saying why, knowing what I expected to have come back without me giving details when it was needed and would think of the things that I was probably gonna ask on follow-up, but I didn't have to. It was just an automatic fit for the way our council operated. I was able to work with Holly for four years and Philip mentioned it earlier. We had a rough go of those first few months before we found Holly. And we can sit here and toot our horn and me and Philip and Nick, "Oh, we were so smart and we interviewed Holly." No, thank you for showing up the day you did when we were ready to hire somebody. Because Trophy Club is just so lucky to have, to have had you as the backbone of, uh, Nick mentioned it, you know, the, the, the town secretary is like an operational hub of, of all kinds of things that go on in a municipality. And in addition to the things that you all mentioned with, with custodian of records and elections and, uh, all the things that go into putting agendas together. I mean, she's, she's responsible in some way or another for supporting every department in, in the town. And, uh, to call it, you know, the colloquial understanding of the term secretary does a disservice to, to every municipal clerk in Texas, but it does a tremendous tragic disservice to people that have the hall, the quality that Holly Fimbres has. And, um, I'm sad to see you go. Um, I am very happy that you've found something that will help to get you where you're trying to go. Um, like Girasi said, "Long as I live here," which I'm on the Officer Voight plan, by the way. They're taking me out of my house in a wheelchair or a stretcher. Um, long as I'm here, you've got an ally and you've got someone that will always try to work as hard as I can to find a space for you here. We spend a lot of money every year and we can always carve out some for you. Um, so yeah, congratulations. Um, it was really fun working with you. Hate to see you go. And that's it.
All right.
Thanks, y'all.
Greg, did you want to say a few words?
You fill out a card.
I don't know, my head's gonna fit up.
One of the good things that going towards the end is you don't, everyone's said everything, so you don't have to repeat. Uh, to Ryland's point, a wheelchair, but my next move is to the box, so. I've been here since 18 years. I think I've seen all the town secretaries. You're not just by far the best, the best employee this town has ever had. Uh, I'm here for another reason. Uh, Judge Janet, uh, she's a little too emotional. In fact, I had to almost drag you to come. She appreciates all the kindness, the instructions, the work, the supervision. Uh, when she would get going crazy, you were, you were the calming seas and she really appreciates that. So thank you very much. Good luck in Grapevine. And, uh, we go there all the time. Maybe we'll bump into each other at a restaurant. Good luck.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, seeing no one else wishing to speak.
And I, I will say, Nick, that later on we're gonna-
Did you put your name in the list?
Later on, we're gonna have a hiring committee and I'm very reluctant to put my name in that for the hiring committee because we did bet a thousand on that. My average on town managers is about .068, but-
Okay, okay.
Town secretary's thousand.
All right. Uh, so we're going to move on. Uh, Holly, thank you so much. Remember that you are going to adjourn the meeting when we're to that point. So I'm gonna skip some items because we have people here from PTA that, uh, are gonna receive a proclamation and I, I know they've been waiting a long time. And although many of these items won't take long, whatever it takes is probably too much. So I'm gonna move us to item 11. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a proclamation of the town council recognizing February 2020 as Kindness Awareness Month in Trophy Club and provide an effective date. And at this time, I would recognize Councilmember Fleury to read proclamation 2020-01 and make a motion to approve. Alicia?
Town of Trophy Club Texas proclamation number 2020-01. Whereas the incidence of random acts of violence is increasing in the United States, reaching epidemic levels. And whereas an estimated 962,300 violent incidents occurred in the US public schools nationwide and one in five students have been bullied during the school year. And whereas February 17th through February 23rd has been declared International Random Acts of Kindness Week and our NISD Trophy Club schools have been challenged to perform random acts of kindness both locally as well as globally as part of our month-long Campaign for Kindness. And whereas the Town of Trophy Club recognizes the value of simple acts of kindness performed without prompting or reason and how these acts can positively impact the performer, the recipient, and onlooker of the good deed. And whereas Texas PTA has always advocated for kindness in our schools by providing tools and resources for our local PTAs to utilize in their parent, teacher, student programs and to support year-round kindness initiatives within our school communities. And whereas by providing random acts of kindness and reaching out to one another, regardless of social or economic status, education, gender, origin, religious belief, age, lifestyle, or abilities, we extend an opportunity for grace, dignity, and acceptance that might not otherwise be offered. And whereas to initiate a student-led, community-wide campaign for kindness via activities and events promoting kindness, including a fun run for kindness and a global service project through a coordinated partnership between the Town of Trophy Club, its four NISD schools, Beck PTA, Lakeview PTA, Medlin PTA, Byron Nelson PTSA, and HKC that is strategically designed to create a culture of kindness. Through this campaign, students and their families and our residents will be called to action to change their community and the world. Now therefore I, Mayor Cenex Sanders, in conjunction with the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club Texas, to hereby proclaim February 2020 is Kindness Awareness Month, passed and approved by the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club Texas this 14th day of January 2020. I move to pass the proclamation as read.
Second. All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Fleury and a second by Councilmember Monger. All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous.
And while you're getting ready for your photo op, I can read off all of our recipients and they can start heading up for their picture.
All right, you wanna come up here and we're gonna give you proclamations.
So we have Byron Nelson High School Lead Counselor Paige Smith, our Byron Nelson High School PTSA President Dina Coleman, and Board Members Renee Barr and Jill Milliken. We also have our students, our freshman president, I'm sorry, yes, our freshman president, Emma Barr, sophomore president, Miles Milliken, and our senior president, Brandon Both, who's also our student council president and football player and academic scholar and, and, and. Uh, we also have our Medlin PTA President, Ms. Wendy Bailey, our Beck Elementary PTA President, Beth Ann Sands, and also Board Member Pulling Double Duty, Jill Milliken, and our Lakeview Board Member Representative from PTA, Leslie Greco-Pool. So thank you all for being here to receive our, uh, the kindness proclamation and thanks for all your support throughout the years for kindness initiatives in our school and our communities. Thanks for your participation in our upcoming, uh, campaign for kindness.
So somehow get in here. Come on.
I'm gonna jump in too. Yes, Alicia's on our board too.
Are you gonna take Byron Nelson? Okay, turning around. Medlin. You moved sides. Beck. Lakeview. All right. I don't have anything for you all. But let me squeeze in here. You might wanna turn a little sideways or something so we can get it ready.
I'm glad you brought my shirt.
Okay, get a peanut lady. Okay, come on in. Thank you for everything, Joe.
So, thank you, Tom.
Especially, uh, this week, we were very much reminded of all the things that you're facing. Thank you so much. Appreciate it so much. Thank you. For those of you who were not connected to social media, they had an exciting week at schools. So they deal with all sorts of issues and we appreciate everything you do for our kids.
And thank you to the police department for helping me yesterday.
Thank you. All right, so we are gonna go back to item number four. The town manager Narwood's update, provide, uh, about information about election on May the 2nd.
Okay, uh, on your agenda tonight, you've got a, an item calling for the election. First day to file is tomorrow, January 15th. Uh, the last day to file will be, uh, February 14th. So right out of month and that can be done through the town secretary's office. Um, just a quick update on the marquee signs. Uh, they, they are supposed to put in the information boards into this week pending weather, but the forecast is cold and rainy, so it may be next week. And they said it'd only take a few days to do the, the brickwork around it. So, uh, they're still saying into January, have all three of them done. So we're, we're gonna hold them to that. Uh, and then also, uh, with Holly, this is her last meeting. We've got, uh, staff members, that's his first meeting. Uh, our new finance manager, Mike Irwin, uh, he's-
Mike?
He's right here. Uh, bachelor's degree from Baylor, master's degree from University of North Texas. Uh, past two positions have been Director of Finance in Kerrville, Texas, and most recently Indicator. So really excited, uh, unanimous choice. And hopefully you'll get that batting average up from .068, so.
You're never gonna live that sound.
But anyway, we're, we're glad to have, have Mike here. Um, I think it comes from a long line of, uh, public servants. I believe your father retired from-
Yes, sir.
Uh, as fire chief in Hearst?
Yes, sir.
So, uh, again, knows the area and really excited about what he's gonna bring to the organization. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mike, welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
I look forward to item number seven in a minute. Uh, I've been kidding with him. Uh, okay, anybody have any questions for our town manager? Here are none, we'll move on. Uh, item number five, received town council liaison update discussion of same charter review commission and Philip Schaffner flew back from Chicago to make the meeting.
Yeah. Um, so I, I was there last night and-
So I, I was there last night, and the last question was from Lou Apprippery, who said, who said, "I'd like to ask the Council Liaison," and of course, I was like, oh, it's, they're very boring meetings, so. So anyway, he, he said, "Do you want to add anything?" And the, what I said last night is that I agreed with what the Charter Review Commission had said. The charter has reviewed, been reviewed up, down, sideways, all around, from different charter committees throughout the years. And so they, they made very few changes, or they made, they're going to make very few recommendations. I think they're going to present us with three, and my feeling is what I told the Charter Commission, my feeling as, my personal feeling as a council member, is that I would just take those recommendations and pass them right to the citizens. They did that thorough job of vetting, and they discussed things that we have discussed for years, like the having to resign when you file. They discussed that. They discussed things like four votes require, you know, four affirmative votes required, which, which I'd like to change, but, you know, it's, it's, they discussed it, they went back and forth, and I will say that we had a very high quality, every pick that each council member made was, was very high quality. And they were very professional, Dennis did a great job as chairperson, and so my recommendation, when it's presented to us, would be to just pass it on to the citizens, the three things that they, they brought forward.
All right, thank you, Phillip. Anybody else have any questions? All right, they have one more meeting, is that right?
Correct. They have one more meeting, and I think Wade made the suggestion to have it in the EOC to finalize everything, and if they made any changes, they could do it right then, and then present it to us at our next meeting.
So that means first meeting in February?
Yeah, and I, I assume, Holly, we would have time to put any, any of those on the ballot, correct?
Yes, you would have until February 1st, it's going to be, Ryland was great to suggest it goes to the retreat first, and then February 11th, y'all would call that special election.
So.
So we are kind of on a short fuse here to kind of see if we can get it to the people in time.
And I might recommend, Holly, that you send at least the three recommendations to councils, so that you can at least have time to, to look at those. They're not, just realize they're not finalized, but these are the three things that they're discussing.
Topics at least.
Correct. Right.
All right. Anybody else? All right, we will then move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Town Council, and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does anybody wish to remove any of the items six through 10?
Motion to approve consent agenda items six through 10.
Second.
Second.
Jensen moved, and Bone seconded. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. Golly gee, Mike, they approved it before I could remove that item to ask a question about. Oh, well, guess we'll just go on. Seems though he's had one day, well, two days. This is your second day.
Oh, well, then let's remove it from the consent.
Motion to reconsider, right? We took care of item 11. We're going to item 12. Consider and take appropriate action regarding an ordinance of the Town of Trophy Club ordering and calling a general election to be held on May 2nd for the purpose of electing one mayor, and one council member to place one, and one council member to place two on the Trophy Club Town Council, each for a term of three years respectively, and provide an effective date. This is ordinance 2020-01, and I move the approval of ordinance 2020-01.
Well, I was going to do it, because I was just thankful I don't have to run. Second?
Second.
Jeez.
All right, moved by Sanders, seconded by Bone. Any discussion? All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. We have done our part to call the election. All right, item 13, discussion of items for future agenda to include items for consideration of the February 1, 2020 Council Retreat Agenda on the February 11 Council Agenda, as well as items from the Town Council Future Agenda List. So I have Councilmember Fleury here who wanted to speak.
A couple of things I'd like to see coming up, one of which is a citizen survey, similar to what we did in 2013. I think that we've had a lot of changes in our community, a lot of development, a lot of maybe a change in demographic, citizens moving in and out. I think six and se, six or seven years is, is a long period of time where we can do another survey and, and see what our community is looking for, what wants, needs, and things like that. So I'd like to explore another community survey, citizen survey. Second thing I'd like to talk about is the formation of a Loop Road Committee to, this is a little different than we've done before, instead of directing town staff to look at the potential yes or no of this, have this be an ad hoc committee, a citizen-led ad hoc committee. They can meet here, have our support, whatnot, but I think there's still a lot of discussion. This, this issue has not been put to bed. There are citizens out there that feel that things are left undone, per se, so let's pull from their talents, their resources, their time, their knowledge, their connections, and see how far they can go with it. And I think that would settle the discussion once and for all, then there's no question yes or no, possible, not possible, because any other discussion beyond that is mute until we know if you can or not. And if we have those in our community that are so vocal and so willing to, to take this to task, then let's let them do it, and let's support them. They don't need our permission to do it, they could form their own, but I would like to see us talk about it and see how we could support that effort.
All right, so Alicia wants to add those two items to the future agenda list. Does anybody else have anything they want to add to the future agenda list? All right, we also have on this particular item on page 305 is our meeting temporary agenda for February 11th. Does anybody have any issues with that? All right, so I have a question before we move to item A. It is my understanding that all elected officials and maybe all municipal employees have to go through cybersecurity training. And have we done that or scheduled that yet, Steve? And what are we doing about that?
I'm not certain. I don't know if they're, is a state requirement, or if that is more of a local option. I know most cities do require their employees to identify phishing and to identify all sorts of dangerous emails, but, but Wade, what's, do we?
Yeah, there is a new, at the last legislative session, there is a requirement for some training for all elected officials and for all town employees. They have not finalized the curriculum for that at the state level. We're still waiting on them to finalize that curriculum and then push it down to us, and then we'll make a decision on whether that's something that we can handle in-house through the IT department with Mike Caster, as he's standing over my shoulder, I can feel that his eyeballs staring in the back of his head.
Totally staring at you right now.
We're going to decide whether or not we can do that in-house, or whether we're going to have to hire someone to help us with that, with at least the formation of that class.
Mike, did you have something to say?
That sums it up. Close enough.
All right, call Monger, wanted to say something?
Do we have a report on cyber attacks? Do we have anything that indicates how many cyber attacks we might get on a daily or a weekly basis?
Yeah, Mike keeps track of it. It's-
Pretty significant?
Oh, it's thousands.
A lot more than you would think.
Come to the microphone, raise the mic, please.
It would be a lot more than you would think. I don't have the numbers handy, but if you really want them, I can pass them on.
Last report you gave us was like in the 30,000-
Per week.
Range per week.
Yeah. If you were to put a, just a standard-built machine on the internet with no protection whatsoever, within 15 minutes, it's compromised on average. I mean, it's, it's the Wild West.
All right, my understanding that someone told me today is that you can take the online course, and it's available. So that's the reason I brought it up. I was at a meeting this morning, and that was part of the discussion that was happening among mayors.
We'll look at it.
So I bring it up now, because future agenda is when we can kind of say that's something that we need to be looking into and make sure that we get trained. A lot of it is procedural things that are being recommended. Part of that, hopefully you know, that says, "Don't open an email unless you know who it's from," and even though it looks like it came from insanders@trophyclub.org, maybe it didn't, and so how do you actually recognize whether I sent it or not? So, because once you click on it, you're there, and that's where a lot of the problems happen. For municipalities, the state in the law that was written is concerned about the fact that we could be held hostage financially from ransomware that gets into our network, and then we can't do anything until we pay the fee.
Yep.
So it's extremely important, all of you in the business world are having to do that, and so I think it's just important that we did it. All right, anybody else have anything for the list?
I had a question, so-
Michael?
I guess, I guess Wade, are you the one running point on this issue, or the pastor?
Myself and Pastor, yes.
Okay, so I guess my question is, is that, you talked about the state put down legislation, but they haven't finalized the course yet, at least that's our understanding as of right now. My question is, has the state, even though they haven't finalized the training, have they set a deadline that we're going to be held to on the back end, that whenever that training is decided, we may have a very short suspense to fulfill it?
Yes, they have, and I think it's at the end of this year. Mike, is it August?
Somewhere in June, I believe.
June or August.
Okay. When do we, when do we, do we have an idea of when the state, the state might push down the parameters?
We'll have something short.
Okay. I just want to be sure that we, we have, you guys have enough time to react to it. So that's just my concern, and-
It's more than on our radar.
I'm tracking. I figured as much, but thought that's the obvious question, so.
June 14, 2020. All of us have to have it by now.
Did you say June 14?
June 14, 2020, and following employees, local government entities, employees who have access to a local government computer system or database, and elected officials. Period.
Yeah, we, we had it back in the Army days, and it's just online training, through like a 30 slides, death by PowerPoint, get a certificate at the end.
Is that Russian site?
It, it was.
All right.
It's just elected officials, it does not include appointed officials. We had that clarified.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so if you would, make sure, let's get that on that. If we, anything we need to do agenda-wise, get it there. If not, then it won't be on the future agenda. All right, item A refers to item six on the future agenda list. Task the town, we, we tasked the town attorney and Planning and Development Department to identify all town situations that allow citizens petitions where municipal duty is required, and town attorney Dodd is going to report on that.
Yes, yes, Mayor, thank you. We, the planning department, I looked at it, really the only situation where you're going to have a ministerial duty come, let me back up. This arose out of the case that a lot of issues have come out of, but this particular one was, Councilmember Schaffner wanted to avoid situations where you have a ministerial duty to vote, and citizens think they have an extra right to get extra vote and supermajorities and things like that. We've looked through everything, and I've brainstormed everything else. The only situation that's going to apply in is replating, and the way our current ordinance is, it allows the petition. State law does not require a petition or allow it, and the state law actually changed this last legislative section and made it much more administrative even. So the solution is, we'll bring forward an ordinance to change our ordinance to match the current state law, and that will remove the petition and supermajority vote in a situation where you could possibly have a ministerial duty.
All right, anybody have any questions about that? So when do you think we will have that back?
Within the next two, three meetings, I would say.
Okay.
We'll start working on it tomorrow.
All right.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, anybody else have anything, future agenda list or next agenda item?
I just have one comment. On the, on the Loop Road, if we do go forward with any type of thing on that, I just think that that's something we may want to roll into the strategic planning session and have like, that as maybe an action item for down the road as far as a greater scheme, not, not to put the cart in front of the horse, but part of the, that's incorporated in a master plan, what master plan we still have left to do in the town.
All right, so we'll be discussing what we're going to do in our retreat shortly. All right, so have I missed anything? Seems as though I skipped things. I don't think so. So I think we are down to item 14, is that right? Anybody see anything that I've missed?
I don't think so.
So in just a minute, we will adjourn into executive session. We'll take a short break to celebrate cake with Holly, and we welcome everybody to stay and have a piece of cake with us. And so pursuant to the following designated sections of the Texas Government Code, annotated Chapter 551, Texas Open Meeting Act, the council will convene into executive session to discuss the following, Section 551074, personnel matters to discuss or deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee. It is in reference to the Town Secretary's position. It is 8:05, and we will go into executive session. All right. It is 8:56, and we have returned from executive session. Item number 15, consider and take appropriate action regarding the executive session. I would recognize Eric Jensen for a motion.
Motion to have Mayor Sanders, Town Manager Norwood, and Assistant Town Manager Carroll interview candidates for the Town Secretary position.
Second.
And Phillip seconded. All right. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. I then would recognize Phillip Schaffner for a motion.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to give authority to the Town Manager to name an acting Town Secretary.
Second.
And I think Sean seconded, is that right? Mm-hmm. All right, any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. Holly, your last duty is up here.
David can turn the deal off. Holly erased the whole thing.
You just, I think that we are adjourned.
We are adjourned at 8:57 p.m.
Thank you so much.